Good afternoon everyone and welcome to this meeting of the Inner South West Community Committee. My name is councillor Mohammed Iqbal and I will be chairing today's meeting. Forgive me for my voice, it's a bit heavy today because of sore throat. The Inner South West Community Committee covers Armley, Beeston and Holbeck, Huntlet and Riverside, and Kirkstall wards and is a committee where ward councillors have an opportunity to discuss and make decisions about services and priorities for the local area and also consider funding applications for local community projects and youth activities. Could I remind everyone that today's meeting is being livestreamed on the City Council YouTube channel so that the public can observe the meeting without needing to be present? Could I now invite members and officers to introduce themselves and mute your microphone once you have introduced yourself if we could start from my left and I'll mute my phone.
Hi, it's Kimberly Frankos, I'm the Localities Officer for Inner South West.
Afternoon everybody, Caroline Schleff from the Communities team.
Councillor Paul Ray, Huntlet and Riverside Ward.
Good afternoon, councillor Shafali from Beeston and Holbeck Ward.
Afternoon everyone, councillor Andy Rontree, Kirkstall.
Good afternoon, I'm Andrew Scape, Beeston and Holbeck Ward.
Hi there, Hannah Bithel, Kirkstall.
Hi everyone, councillor Fiona Benner, Kirkstall Ward.
Hello everybody, I'm Andy Pardham, councillor for Armley Ward.
Afternoon, I'm Luke Cunningham, councillor for Armley Ward.
Taj Verdi, Programme Manager, Communities team.
Good afternoon, Toby Russell, Clerk for the Committee.
Could we have members of the public to introduce themselves, starting from Jimmy? Thank you, so can I now ask the clerk to run through agenda items, one to five please?
Thank you Chair, so under item number one, we have no appeals against the refusal of inspection of documents. Item number two, we have no items which would require the exclusion of the press or the public. Item number three, we have no formal late items but there was this supplementary information pack which includes additional finance applications. Item number four, can I ask members to declare any interests they may have? Yeah, thank you councillor Ray.
I have an interest in the Friends of Cross Flats Park, I'm a committee member and I can't remember, are we doing the Huntlet and Beeston girl festivals on this one? No, okay, I don't need to declare that one, that's fine, just that one please.
Thank you, could I declare a non pecuniary interest in Armley Action Team on their board of directors?
Thank you. And item number five, apologies, so apologies for absence have been received from councillor Alice Mart, councillor Ed Carlyle and councillor Annie Maloney, thank you Chair.
Thank you, Toby, that takes us to item six, which is the open forum of the discretion of the Chair. A period of 10 minutes may be allocated to each ordinary meeting for members of the public to make representations or to ask questions on matters within the terms of references of the Community Committee. No member of the public shall speak for more than three minutes in the open forum except by permission if I decide to extend the time. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on anything? Okay, I take it that nobody has any comments to make or wish to speak at this time. So that takes us to item seven, Chair's role profile, Kim to present.
Hi, yes, so this is the Community Committee Chair's role profile and I will take it as read and just open it up if anybody wants any questions. The role profile's been done as part of the Community Committee review.
Any questions? No, so that takes us to agenda item, main community committee appointments, over to Toby.
Thank you Chair, so yeah, this is the appointment schedule for outside bodies, clusters, LCPs and the corporate parenting board. So if you turn to page 12 of the report, point six is where the schedule begins. So the LCP schedule post-Community Committee review, that's been provided by the LCP development team. There's also an online mapping tool available if anyone has any queries on any boundaries or anything like that. And yeah, if there's any queries or things to take away in an appointment, you can leave it vacant and then we can reconsider them at the next meeting before it gets submitted to GPC. So yeah, I'll just run through nominations and also just note if there's any sort of contested appointments, it would be a full committee decision. So I'll start with the outside body, which is the Mary Jane Butler Trust with councillor Benner, councillor Bithel and councillor Rontree currently sat on that. Are we happy to continue with that for this year as well? Thank you. So yeah, now we'll move on to clusters, so we have the Children's and Families, Beeston, Cottingley and Middleton and it's got councillor Ali currently sat on it, are there any changes for that or any other nominations? That stays as it is, thank you. Next we have the Children's and Family Cluster for Headinglake and Kirkstall Partnership with councillor Bithel currently on it. Is that continuing? Yep. Next we have the Children's and Family Cluster for Inner West with councillor Cunningham currently on it. Happy to proceed with that, thank you. Now we have the Children's and Family Cluster again for Jess with two appointments for that, so councillor Scopes and councillor Carlyle currently on it, any changes to that one? Thank you. And I'll move on to LCPs, so the first one is for Holt Park and Woodsley and that one's a new one I think for the new committee that's been determined appropriate to appoint by the local care partnership development team, so that's a vacancy if anyone wanted to take it. Okay, we can leave it vacant and reconsider them if, if anything like that. So yeah, I'll move on to the next one, which is the local care partnership for the Inner South communities, which is a new one and is also a vacancy if anyone wanted that one. Okay, thank you. And then we have the local care partnership for Armley with two places and we have councillor Cunningham, councillor Pardham currently on it, is that proceeding, is that? Yep, thank you. Last local care partnership then is Bramley, Wirtley and Middleton and that's currently a vacancy if anyone wanted to take it.
Sorry, just on this one.
Yep.
It does feel that those three areas aren't in this Community Committee, so Middleton is Outer South and Wirtley is Farnham Wirtley.
There is, I did query this one to be fair, because there is the appendices, let me just find the one. Bramley, so yeah, if you see on the appendices, it's this, so that'll be page 19 of the report. If you look at the, it's the second one from the bottom, Bramley, Wirtley, Middleton, you'll see it says, because I queried this one as well, I said it didn't really seem appropriate, but it says Cottingley surgeries as well, so they were just looking for one appointment for that I think. Would you like to nominate yourself for councillor Bithel or have you just got questions?
Not for that one, for Holt Park.
Okay, so we go to agenda item nine, Champions Role, Kim to present that.
Thank you Chair, so again I will take it as read, there are all the Champions Roles, Profiles, Roles and Responsibilities there for each of the delivery groups. Again, they've been done as part of the Community Committee review, unless anybody's got any questions on them, I'll jump straight to appointing Champions. So the first one then, if we can, does anybody want to put themselves forward for the Champion Role for?
Children's Services.
Thank you.
Children's Services. Councillor Bithel for Children's Services, is that okay? Yep.
Okay, so the next one is Community Safety, does anybody want to put themselves forward for that one?
Shaf, okay, fine, I would have gone for it but if you're going for it, fine, okay, thank you. Can we, we can't have two, can we? We can't have two people, so we didn't.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So if I can move on to the next one then, which is Environment? Does anybody want to put themselves forward for that?
Any other offers? You know more about it, you know more. He knows more about rubbish. Well, to be honest, we got some photographs yesterday and the guy who took the photographs were just for the rubbish itself and the bins and I couldn't make out what street where it was he did, so he'll do a good job.
And then last but not least, we have got the Health and Wellbeing and Adult Social Care. Does anybody want to nominate themselves for that?
Any offers?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, Andy. Sorted, yeah, that's agreed, Andy Pardham.
Brilliant, thank you.
So we go to item 10, Kim to present again.
So again, this is following on from the Champions Report, if I can then ask for a councillor from each ward for each of the delivery groups and I'll go through them one at a time. So first if we have Children's Services, so we've got councillor Bithel as Chair from Kirkstall, so if we can ask for an Armley councillor for that. Children's Services Delivery Group. Yep.
So previously, everyone was invited to the working groups, is that still going to be the case?
We still, that is still the case, anybody can come to the working groups but we want an appointed person from each ward as well.
Okay, can I just ask for clarification where it says appointees, appointees plus Chair, what Chair mean?
So like I just explained, so councillor Bithel's going to be the Chair for Children's because she's the Champion. So we've got Kirkstall already, so we need an Armley councillor next if somebody can put themselves forward. Do you think? Okay, so can we leave that one vacant for now and we'll ask at the next meeting, okay? No, 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 not yet, so if we can ask for a councillor from Beeston and Holbeck? Okay, are you writing these out? And then if we can ask for a councillor from Huntlet and Riverside? Wonderful, thank you, if I can then move us on to the Health and Wellbeing, so we have councillor Pardham as Chair. That's right, isn't it? So if we can have somebody from Beeston and Holbeck Ward? Lovely, thank you, Huntlet and Riverside Ward?
I'll go for Community Safety the next one.
Lovely, but, okay.
Health and Wellbeing, we can leave it vacant in case councillor Carlyle must be on it.
Okay, lovely. Kirkstall Ward please. Thank you. So if I can move us on to the Community Safety appointments, we have councillor Ali as Chair, is that right? Community Safety?
And I'll do, I'll do Huntlet and Riverside, yeah.
So we've got Huntlet and Riverside, Kirkstall. Councillor Rontree, thank you, and Armley. Community Safety, thank you. And then again, last one, Environment, so we have, apologies, I forgot the Chair for Environment, sorry. Oh, councillor Ray as Chair, if we can get Huntlet and Riverside councillor? No, sorry, Beeston and Holbeck councillor?
What about you Andrew?
Kirkstall, thank you, and an Armley councillor. Lovely, thank you. So that's all the appointments on that report Chair, thank you.
Well then, that was easy. Right, item 11.
Thank you Chair, again, I will take it as read, I think there's just to say the forward plan will be the working document for each of the delivery groups. Unless there's any questions on that one, again, we can move on. Yep, okay, thank you.
So item 12. Item 12. Which is over to Kim again, do members have any questions?
So again, I'll take the report as read and unless there is any questions, there's a Roles and Responsibilities for if we were to appoint co-op-tees and we just need to decide as a committee if we are going to appoint co-op-tees.
Anybody wants to move a motion?
Thank you Chair, I'd propose that we agreed it, the recommendations, so that we can choose to do it as and when we see fit based on operational need.
Okay, thank you. Item 13, Finance Cover Report, Kim to present and any questions from members, I take it that it's as it's read by everybody?
Chair, please could I just have some clarity on what the decision was regarding item 12?
When does a need will vote, is that? What was, Hannah, you'll have to clarify what you said again.
That we accept the recommendation, which is recommendation two, I'm just pulling my thing back up again. The number 12 on the item is, Community Committee are asked to consider if they would like to appoint co-op-tees. So obviously we've noted it by virtue of it being in the thing, which is the first recommendation. My motion is that we accept that as a committee, we will appoint co-op-tees as and when operationally useful. So therefore it would be down to a ward's discretion.
It means we appoint co-op-tees as and when we're ready, is that right? Shall we put it to a vote then? If the committee, the committee wants to agree to that? Or not, am I correct councillor?
So basically you're agreeing if you want to have co-op-tees or not, but what we're saying is as and when they're needed.
So we could agree to a vote now to appoint co-op-tees as and when required or we vote, majority vote that we don't want co-op-tees, to make it simpler? Yes or no, yeah or no?
Well, it's not the yes or no that I'm trying to clarify, it's the as and when needed. Does that mean we're having, we're voting to have co-op-tees as a cohort for a year? Or does it mean that we're able to invite random people who we think might be relevant to be a co-op-tee for that particular subject area? That's the clarity I'm seeking, thank you.
Councillor Scopes.
Yeah, and I guess the other thing that'd be worth clarifying is who and when appoints the co-op-tees. So I think that's an important aspect, so I don't know if we want to do it in two stages, do we want co-op-tees? And if we do, do we decide who appoints them, because it might be that each ward which has been discussed or it might be that each role Champion group decides and we delegate that. So I think, I think there's two strong possibilities there.
Okay, what I make, the best way forward is that we go for a vote as a committee collectively, whether we want co-op-tees or we don't want co-op-tees, over to you Hannah.
Yeah, just before we move on, just, it might help on the role and responsibilities that are outlined that we'd be agreeing to on appendix seven. It says that no co-op-tee member should be appointed for a period beyond the next annual meeting, so it wouldn't be, it would be timed anyway. You were saying about will it be for years or it can't?
Yeah, it's only for the, if it's accepted, it's only for a year, yeah, okay, so, yeah, Andy.
Chair, just to, I do, so for example, when I'm chairing the Health and Wellbeing, I might want to cooperate X from certain organisation that I'm familiar with as a co-op-tee for that particular issue. More generally, if a ward wants to co-op, is that, are we saying that that's just being delegated to the ward members? Or are we saying that it's going to come back to a vote of the whole committee for each co-op-tee nomination? Do you see what I'm saying Chris?
I think the first point is to whether to agree to co-op-tees or not, so let's iron that out. And then the question is, are we going to have a co-op-tee for each item in future, any particular issue? Or we're going to have a permanent co-op-tee for the year? But let's go for a vote first, I think, that's the best way. Yep, all in favour, we go for a vote? So now, ask for people who are in favour of co-op-tees, if you can put hands up. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, okay. You don't need my vote. So the majority are in favour of co-op-tees. And Hannah's motion was to appoint a co-op-tee as and when required. Now, also, are we going to have a permanent co-op-tee for the year? Or are we going to select a co-op-tee for each individual issue? So a motion on that?
I am wanting it to be as effective and as useful as possible, so therefore if it is better for us to do it on a Champion basis rather than a Ward basis, actually that feels like a really effective compromise. I would say it's probably worth us doing it on a year basis, or at least from when you decide they're needed. It might be the second meeting where you think, oh actually that's really useful to have X person from X organisation, but then it'd be the rest of the year rather than just, because otherwise it's just a guest speaker, it's not a co-op-tee. So therefore, that would be my suggestion, is we go for from when they're appointed to the rest of the year. And actually, I think it's a really good suggestion, I can't remember who made it, that rather than doing it by Ward, we do it by delivery group. So yeah, thanks.
All in favour of that proposal? Okay, what's the fuss? So as and when we feel there needs to be a co-op-tee, we choose a co-op-tee. Yep, okay, and the co-op-tee doesn't have a vote but can join the debate? Yeah, just to clarify things, okay. So that's item 12 done finally, so we go on to item 13, which is Finance Cover Report. I take it that members have read the Finance Report and any questions and comments would be helpful.
So has anybody got any questions on the cover report or can I move on to the Finance Report? You're happy for me to move on, thank you. So, okay, so I'll go on to the Inner South West Finance Report. Again, I will take it as read but there's some specific things that we need to pull out, I think the first one is Minimum Conditions. All right, okay, which is paragraph 18. Do, again, I'll take it as read, do you want me to read through them or are we just happy to agree them?
Are we happy to agree with them?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
No need to read anything, okay, thank you.
I am going to just take you back a step, I do apologise, to paragraph 14 and the table that follows. These are the projects that have been passed out of the £10,000 each ward had. The only reason I'm taking you back to this table is there's two projects that have been approved in Wellbeing but we've been asked to move to YAF, which is the Youth Activity Funding. And they are the Beeston and Holbeck Out of School Programme for £3,465, we're happy to move that from Wellbeing to YAF. Yep, okay, thank you, and then the next one is Beeston Cardinal Square Playing Fields Activity Day for £1,750, we're happy to move that from Wellbeing to YAF. Yes, thank you.
Oh, councillor Bithel.
Yeah, am I okay to ask a question on number 11? It feels like in relation to the SIL, that's kind of moved on since the report was written. But it doesn't talk about, it talks about the funds being pooled across the committee area. The Wellbeing was what was pooled, that hasn't been split equally in terms of carry forward, we've just carrying forward what's left from each of our wards, right? Is that right? Yeah, great.
So before we move on to the projects, I just ask that councillors make a decision on how they are going to allocate SIL spend and whether it's going to be pooled, remaining the ward that it's spending, or how you want to spend it.
Councillor Benner, before we go on to that question.
Sorry, I wanted to just ask a question about 14, I don't know if I've missed something, but I'm not really clear what this money is for, where this £10,000 came from. Or even what the expenditure is in my own ward, I can't, I don't know what these two things relate to.
So all it is, is they allowed £10,000 early out of this year's spend. As of, was it May the 23rd, all community committees were closed down, so didn't operate. But what they, what they allowed for is a £10,000 buffer for each ward in the city to be able to spend some money out of the coming community committees.
Well, when I asked you about that, I was told we couldn't do it when I wanted to get the mural, the money for the mural.
You did, and I remember.
I know.
And we were told that we can't make a decision until the committee, Community Committee.
We were, which is really annoying, because we could have had that mural done like weeks ago, but we were told really explicitly that we couldn't have the money for it.
No, 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 the mural's on the project list, I believe what might have happened is, so don't forget there was a period of March, April to May when it did close down, of when they could spend money and that's where the £10,000 was from.
That still doesn't make sense. Yeah, sorry, just get our dates right, so when we, the last committee's met in March, so to keep us going from March to May, from when the committees were disbanded, we had the £10,000. After May to the AGM, we weren't allowed to spend anything, we were closed down and that's when the mural project came in. Yeah, sorry, it was a mix-up with the dates. Okay, so can I just clarify what these two things are? That the expenditure in Kirkstall Ward, the Safe Parking Signs and the Community Participation and Learning Programme? The two things that are in the Kirkstall column, £500 for Safe Parking Signs and £406 for Community Participation and Learning Programme.
I can come back to you, but and the other one was a small grant, so it will have been sent out by the engagement officers, I can find out and come back to you.
It's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Did we make a decision on SIL? No, that's right, okay, so.
Councillor Scopes, want to make a comment?
Thank you Chair, I make a very similar comment to my mate on our dry run, so SIL money is for helping mitigate the impact of large developments in a particular area. And as I said previously, in Holbeck and in South Leeds, there was a South Bank for South Leeds project. And as a councillor for Holbeck and Beeston, I said to them, if Holbeck gets SIL money, it's got to be spent in Holbeck because they're the ones impacted by the major development more so than Beeston. And so even within my own ward, I'm very keen to keep SIL money very specific to improving the environment and the area around major developments, which do have impacts on people, just like as we know. And so my proposal would be they stay in the wards and even within our wards, we stay within the area of the, in immediate vicinity of major developments. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Scopes. I think this is the comment I made as well, because SIL money is given to the area that has the impact and is affected with the development, like you've got Ellen Road Development Extension, and it's going to have a huge impact, and the money is there to improve the local amenities and to make up for the impact and for that particular area. So I agree with your suggestion and, you know, let's hear what other colleagues want to say. If anybody else wants to speak, any questions? Shall we go for a vote? Should the money stay within the ward that is, the money comes from? Okay, all in favour, thank you for being very considerate. We might have arguments afterwards, but we're okay for now.
So if I can move us on then, unless there are any other questions, I will take us straight to paragraph 27 and we'll start going through the projects for approval. Is that okay? So the first one then is Kirkstal Planters, and it's for £770 from Kirkstal Ward. Can we vote on that?
Yep, all in favour?
No, before we, sorry, before we vote.
Okay, your question.
The project description says, display once in June and once in October. So therefore, it would be too late now theoretically for it to do. So is this going to be for actually October and June?
I think we're done.
Oh, okay.
So can we have a vote, did we have a vote on that? Is everybody in favour?
Are we all in favour?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So if I move us on to paragraph 28, 28 then, and this is the Fab Club. They are asking for £381.72, and that's from Armley, Beeston, Holbeck and Kirkstal. And it's for £127.24 per ward.
Hands up if you agree. Fine, yeah, agreed.
Lovely, thank you. Paragraph 29, we've got the orienteering challenge, and that's from West Leeds Activity Centre. It was across three wards, because it's Armley, Kirkstal and Bramley. For here, we're asking for Armley and Kirkstal, and it's for £666.66. So we are asking for £333.33 per ward.
Hands up if you agree, yeah, thank you.
Lovely, thank you. Paragraph 30, so it's the Igbo Union Summer 2025. They are asking from this committee for £546. That would be £156 from Armley, £218.40 from Beeston and Holbeck, £156 from Hunslaton Riverside and £1560 from Kirkstal.
Are we all in favour? Okay, thank you.
So moving us on to paragraph 31, and this is the involved rent contribution. It's for a year's, it's for £100 towards a year's rent, and it's for Hunslaton Riverside.
All in favour? Okay, thank you.
Lovely. Paragraph 32, so we've got the Armley Leisure Centre Youth Space. This is from Armley Ward, and they are looking for £4,250 to support their year project.
All in favour? All in favour, yes, agreed.
So paragraph 33, and this is the Hawkesworth Wellbeing and Financial Health Check Event. And they're asking for £400 from Kirkstal.
Agreed, okay, item 34 now.
Yep, is Invest Yourself Physically and Mental Wellbeing Conference. They're asking for £138.20. Now that's a breakdown of 98.75 from Beeston and Holbeck, 39.50 from Hunslaton Riverside.
All agreed? Yep, thank you.
So paragraph 35, we've got project development, and this is for Beeston, Holbeck and Hunslaton Riverside Ward, and it's for £400 per ward, so it's 800 in total.
Yeah, Andy, do you want a question?
Yeah, just, it's just the one where they're committed to doing it in Beeston Library as well as the Dusby Hall.
Yep, thank you. All in favour? Thank you.
Paragraph 36, we've got In Power 3, and it's run by New Wiltley Community Association. They are asking for £6,000 from committee for Armley Ward.
All in favour? Just clarification, does it fall in Armley Ward? Because it's on the corner of Tongue Road, isn't it? Yeah. So all in favour, but you want to ask a question?
Well, just, just to add, in a pre-meeting, I requested just some further case study information around the ongoing project. I'd be very interested to see it and some information on when the sessions will be in case we want to attend any.
Yeah, so could we ask for further information on case study and other activities? Thank you, councillor Cunningham.
So paragraph 37 is the neighbourhood policing Stinger. This was for six wards, so the contribution from this committee would be for £385.48, and it's £192.74 per ward from Armley and Kirkstal, and the other part of the committee have agreed it.
Okay, agreed. Andy, is there a question or agreed? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Going on to 30, item 38. So we have the Armley Festival, it's run by Armley Action Team. They are looking for £6,605 from this committee. That would be £5,105 from Armley and £1,500 from Kirkstal.
All in favour?
Yes.
Yep. Yep.
I think, given that we have now got less money this year, because we already had this conversation at a previous committee, we'll obviously honour what we said. But I think moving forward, we probably wouldn't be looking to fund Armley as it stands.
Shall we have a vote on this?
She's saying you're doing it this year, but.
For this year, so all in favour for this year? Okay, thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you. So item 39 would be New Wiltley Festival 2025, run by New Wiltley Community Association, and they are looking for £1,500 from this committee, and that's from the Armley Ward.
Any comments? No, so all in favour, yes?
Lovely. Item number four, to the Inner West Generalist Advice Service, it's run by Betta Leeds Communities. The total project cost to this committee is £12,966, and that's what they're looking for. That would be £5,000 from Armley and £7,966 from Kirkstal Ward.
Do we know why that's the split?
So basically, because it was proved in principle, and then the belief was that Betta Leeds couldn't deliver it with less money. But the conversation at the previous officer had, they said they could. And so I don't know how they came to the decision on the split, but that's what was decided on the split.
I, I guess, again, because we've now got less of a wellbeing pot, it feels unfair to pay more for the same.
Okay. So do you want to, do you want to suggest what you want to pay from Kirkstal Ward? Then you can change it.
I mean, I haven't obviously spoken to my colleagues, but I'd be comfortable with a 50/50 split of it with Armley. In fact, councillor Venna's just yared in my ear. So if you guys are happy to split it 50/50, so £6,453 or whatever.
Right, or would you, or do you just, right.
Okay, let's, let's hear from Armley councillors.
The £5,000 figure comes from the fact that we had a take-up of the service at New Wiltley of about 60%. So 60% of what we paid last year was £5,000. So I think we'd be comfortable with staying with £5,000, bearing in mind that BLC did say they'd still be able to run the service provision in New Wiltley with a reduced figure from New Wiltley. So that's where our £5,000s come from.
So was the figure last year?
So the figure last year was evenly split, the 7, 9, 0, 6, 66, I think that's why your figure's still at that. And then what's happened is Armley and I think Bramley as well have both decided they want to pay £5,000, so.
And they're still getting the same service?
They will obviously get a reduced service to whatever the £5,000 is. So it's whether you want to pay the full amount or whether you want to pay less as well.
Yeah, if they're still going to run the service on £5,000, then we'll pay £5,000. Yeah, because otherwise it feels like we're paying more for the same.
So I'll go back then and say, if we can vote on £5,000 from Armley and £5,000 from Kirkstal.
Any comments on that? With equal split, £5,000 each from each ward?
So it'd be £10,000 in total, Toby, for the project, £5,000 from each ward. Can we have a vote on that now?
Okay.
Thank you.
Carried.
So if I go to paragraph 41, and that is the wellbeing and financial check event at Armley Hub. And they are looking for £150 towards the event from Armley Ward.
Would I be able to make a suggestion that we pay that via MICE funds?
Yeah, absolutely, if that's what you want to do.
Would you be happy with that?
I'd be to do that, and I think councillor Smart said she'd do that as well.
Yeah, that's fine then.
Fifty pounds each, yeah.
So, yeah, so we won't have a vote on that, because that's going to MICE instead. So if I can take us to paragraph 42, and that is the inner South West Menopause and Midlife Health Support. They are looking for £3,000 in total from the committee, and that would be £1,500 from each Beeston, Holbeck and Hunslaton Riverside.
Councillor Scopes on then, Paul.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So I just, I had a conversation with Kim earlier in the week about, about this one. And I think my take is, they asked for a similar amount last year. And one of the things we've said at every meeting that we've had with people wanting to start new projects is, we're, I'm certainly well up for what I call C-funding, so starting a new project, I think that's something that's really good. But it's got to be steps towards sustainability. And so whether that is some kind of contribution or some kind of fundraising via other means, that has to be part of the process. So I guess I'm a little bit, I'm a bit uneasy about giving them the same amount each year. I don't know what councillor Ray's views are on that, but I don't know whether we accept it this year and then write back to them and say it has to be less next year. But I'll let councillor Ray come in and see what his views are.
Councillor Ray.
No, exactly the same point as well. I think it, it's a great project, however, we can't be sustaining these forever. And I think often when we had our pre-meet conversation, I very much would want to be going to them and saying, you've got three years' worth of diminishing funds from a certain maximum, absolute maximum. And that's not guaranteed to get every year, but if they come back next year, they're certainly not getting £3,000. I don't, I would expect at least that to go down by 33%, if not more. They have to show they're going to be financially viable.
Should we offer two and a half this year?
I, I think you'll be a bit, a bit, bit wrong to change it last minute right now. I think we give them what they've asked for this year, but make it very clear that in following years, it will be a diminishing return.
Councillor Biddle.
Yeah, I guess we know that women are more likely to struggle to get funding, especially for something like the menopause, where it is so roundly ignored by society at large a lot of the time. So whilst I absolutely think it's legitimate, the diminishing returns element, I think to now spring that they can't would be incredibly cruel.
Okay, I think there's a common agreement on that. So, but we need to send them a note to say that we can't continue giving you this kind of support every year. They look, they need to look at sustainability.
I will work with the projects providers and do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we agree with this application of this year? Yep, okay.
So if I can move on, on to paragraph 43, Kirkstal Underpass mural, and that is for £2,080 from Kirkstal Ward. Can we have a vote on that?
Yeah, agreed.
Thank you.
You're spending big figures, you guys, you know, in Armley and Bramley. Yeah, they'll be after us then.
So paragraph 44, it's a replacement DFIB part, and it's for £289 from Hunslaton Riverside, and it's for the Church of Nazarene. Can we have a vote on that, please?
All in favour, yes?
Thank you. Paragraph 45, Royal Grove Court and Shrewsbury Clearance. This is for £4,000 from Hunslaton Riverside Ward.
All agreed? Any comments, if you know the area?
So item number 46, Royal Action Day, and it is for £1,443.04, and that's from the Hunslaton Riverside Ward.
Okay, all agreed, yeah.
Lovely. So if I can then move us on to YAF funding in the papers and down to paragraph 50. There's a slight amendment to this, and I do apologise, this is my fault. So I'm going to read it from the, from my laptop. So it's Breeze in the Park, they are looking for, basically, yeah, it's fif, it's 11, one second, 11,550, so it was put down wrong in the, in the minutes, I do apologise. And that is from Armley would be £3,850, Kirkstal would be £3,850, because you have one in each ward. And then for Beeston and Holbeck, it would be £1,925, and for Hunslaton Riverside, it would be £1,925, because they share an event. Any questions or can we vote?
Any comments, questions? Yeah, councillor Cunningham and then councillor Biddle.
Thank you, just a comment. I'd just like to request some greater flexibility of entry and tickets on the day itself. So not just the pre-bucking or the free tickets via clusters, just some flexibility on the day for families who might be in the park and want to attend, thank you.
Yeah, so we'd had a pre-conversation about this, I will take it back to the Breeze team and come back to you.
Councillor Biddle.
Just for fairness, I wonder if the conversation also needs to potentially take place? If we're going to say to external agencies that we're having a diminishing return, actually, we funded Breeze, and it's brilliant, don't get me wrong, for many, many years. I wonder if there's an internal conversation as well to be had?
Can take that back?
Yep, if we can take that back, okay. All in favour, thank you. Any comments? No, all in favour? Yes, agreed, thank you.
Lovely, thank you. So if you could take us to paragraph 52, and that is the Living in Bigger Bodies. This is from Youth Services. The overall project, project cost is £2,568, and they are looking for £1,280 from this committee from Kirkstal Ward.
All in favour? Yeah, a comment?
Comments, yes, please. I might be misremembering, but there was a discussion around whether this could be funded from YAF or whether it had to all come from wellbeing, because it wasn't targeted, but then it kind of was, but then it wasn't, and there were sections of it that weren't. So I just wanted to check that if we agree this, that's okay. But if not, can we agree that if it goes and it can't come out of YAF for whatever reason, you'll have to speak to Paddy, he did all the work on it, then can we do wellbeing?
So if it's targeted, it's better that we just put it out of wellbeing now, to be fair, because YAF has to be universal.
So it is universal.
Okay.
But it's called Living in Bigger Bodies.
Okay.
So whilst nobody would be stopped, but then I made the argument before that if you call something basketball, you're targeting it, people that like basketball.
Yeah, yeah, so as long as it's open to everybody, it can go out of YAF.
Oh, fine, great, excellent then.
Okay, thank you. Did we, I'll vote on that then.
Can we have a vote on that, please? All in favour? Agreed, okay, thank you.
So there is a lot of these, if I can then take you to your supplementary items pack. And to paragraph one first of all, and this is the Red Flags Interactive Theatre Workshop. The overall cost of the project is £3,000, they are. Um, the overall cost of the project is £3,000. They are looking for £2,000 from this committer, and that's from Beeston and Holbeck and Hunsluton Riverside, and it would be a £1,000 per ward.
All agreed? No comments? Thank you. Yeah, go on, councillor Ray.
As long as they make sure they do half in Beeston and Holbeck and half in Hunsluton Riverside Ward, so it's fairly distributed.
And I have had that conversation with them again already, um, and they're also willing to come back and work with councillors as to where you want it. So, yeah.
All agreed?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
So if I can move on to item two, Summer Bands in Cross Flats Park. Um, the overall cost of the project is £5,356, fifty-one, sixty, and they are looking for £2,971 from wellbeing. Again, that's from Beeston and Holbeck and Hunsluton Riverside, so it would be £1,485.50 per ward.
Any comments? Paul.
Not to create myself more work since I sit on this committee, but, um, again, the same thing needs to go to them. They need to start working towards sustainability because we've funded this year in, year out for a very, very long time.
A long time.
Yeah, it's great, as I say that with my Friends of Cross Flats Park hat on, but we do need to see them start taking on more financial responsibility for it. It can't keep coming to the council.
Okay, and at the moment, we're all in favour to give this money. Yeah, thank you. Agreed.
So item number three in the supplementary items, um, removal of benches and planters at Dewsbury Road Hub. It's for three, uh, £925, and that's from Hunsluton Riverside Ward.
Agreed. So it costs so much to remove. Maybe cheaper to place them there. Okay, we go on to next item.
So item number four is the Scoop Dog signs, um, and that is for Beeston and Holbeck, and it's for £614.28 from wellbeing.
Are we okay? Yeah, all agreed, no comments? Yeah, agreed. Next item.
So item number nine, this is the Art and Digital Wellbeing Sessions in Armley. Now, it's a total project cost of £9,000, and the, the ask was for £9,000 from Armley, but we have had conversations and there might be a reduced amount that councillors want to give.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, Andy Parham.
Yeah, Chair, uh, on that issue, um, the councillors, we've, we've spoken already together, and councillor Smart would like to make a contribution, which is not here, and she's not, um, she's not said any more to me about that amount. Uh, all three councillors do have some, we are supportive of it, but we would, we'd like to defer the decision if we can to a later stage when we can all speak together and get some information from the project leader as well. Maybe meet with her. We'd like to meet if possible. Okay.
Okay, that's good. So we defer this item until further information is sought and you come to a conclusion. How do we agree then? Uh, does it have to come to next committee or we do it on?
Yeah, we just need to agree as a committee, we defer and then bring it to.
To next committee meeting. So if you, you've got time, up to next committee to make a decision as to what you want to do. Okay, thank you.
So, um, paragraph number six, we have the Abbey House Museum Visibility in the Community. Um, total project cost of £4,753, which they are looking at from committer, and that is for Kirkstall Ward.
Uh, comment from anybody? All in favour? Agreed. Okay.
So item number seven, we have the public space CCTV cameras, um, and from Leeds Watch. This is for a total project cost of £10,000. Um, that would be a split of £2,000 from Armley, £4,000 from Beeston and Holbeck, £2,000 from Hunsluton Riverside and £2,000 from Kirkstall.
Any comments? Councillor Ray.
These are becoming core costs now, every single year. And there needs to be a conversation because we might as well just say we're going to do this every single year. No, 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 but, but some of these were put in before I was, in, in my package, put in before I was a councillor, and the police have really not demonstrated actually they get anything incredibly useful from them. And even Leeds Watch have said that the police don't particularly ask for a lot of information from them. There needs to be a real conversation now with colleagues in safer, stronger communities and West Yorkshire Police, because we're basically putting these in at the request of the police to help them out, yet they're not bloody using them.
Uh, fair point. Um, I'm responsible, guilty for having three in our ward and the two in the Cross Flats Park at the time. Uh, however, I feel we're not getting money's worth from these cameras and the costs that are, because police are not using them effectively. So I agree with you, councillor Ray. Councillor Scopes and then councillor Bittle.
Um, thanks, Chair. So I thought we had some data from Leeds Watch last time at the number of requests and the number of, um, where the data came through, and I think we could ask for that again. When we did it last time, certainly the ones in Holbeck, um, it was a number that if I was a victim of crime, I'd be very happy with the council paying to help bring a prosecution. Um, and so I think I, I welcome getting the data again from Leeds Watch about how much it's used, and then maybe reminding the police about the process, um, in terms of getting the data. But last time we looked at this, the, the cost per bit of footage seemed like a number that if I was a victim of crime, I'd be very happy for it to be paid.
You're right, councillor Scopes. I think if you're a victim, you're willing to pay any price, but I recall my last visit to Middleton, uh, where the cameras are, and when we got the figures, uh, there weren't enough requests from police asking for information, and you can correct me, I think, Paul, you was there as well. So at that time, we felt that we're not getting money's worth out of these cameras. Over to you, Paul.
Yeah, I, I, I think they do have value if they're being used, but if we're literally just, and I think it'll be different camera to camera, and probably MPT to MPT in terms of how they're utilizing it. I think there is a genuine question about, you know, I question how much the ones that are monitoring Cross Flats Park are actually helping, for example, to reduce crime in Cross Flats Park, because by all the evidence, it would suggest it's not. So I think there is a question, because I would rather put money into mobile cameras that we can move around as needed, and that will probably have a slightly higher cost because obviously there's an installation cost per time, but actually have a bit of a, you know, a flexibility in the system to move around so we can hit high-impact areas. Because once people know the cameras are there, they know how to avoid them. And so are we literally just paying for lampposts effectively?
Yeah, um, they're a good deterrent, and if they're used for one particular issue where there's a victim and there's good results, it's, it's worth a million pounds. Um, but I think we need to put, put some pressure on to get really more work out, more use out of them. Uh, that's my opinion, but councillor Bittle.
Uh, two things. The first is perhaps, um, rather than going back and forth, we task the Community Safety Delivery Group with this as a project for the year. Um, you're welcome. Um, and in terms of, uh, the numbers, we got an email that said that Kirkstalls was only a thousand, not two thousand. Um, it says here are the correct ward breakdowns, and it just said a grand for us rather than two, um, at fourteen oh five on Tuesday.
So have us two thousand makes up ten thousand, so, yeah. It is two thousand. Okay, any other comments from anybody? Uh, councillor Ali.
Chair, personally, I think they're not effective at all. Um, I'm sure we had the same issue last year, and personally, I think offer them less this year, and, uh, we need to look alternative ways.
I think as councillor Bittle suggested, you're right. Then people know the black spots, how to hide from them, and a lot of these criminals know that they're not being used effectively. So we're not, we're not getting hundred percent use out of them. But I think what councillor Bittle says, we pass it over to the Community Safety Group and ask them to have a detailed, thorough discussion and with the community safety groups. Yeah, yeah, how we can make them more effective.
Yeah, I agree, and also maybe a, a review of the areas where they're actually located, because I know that ours have been on Ley Lane for a number of years, and presumably that's, um, a high area of CCTV anyway, because it's already the, the street where the prison is. So I'm just wondering whether there are other areas where, where ours could be more effectively used.
Yeah, I think there'll be a lot of big costs associated to moving these fixed cameras, you know, on these big poles, but mobile cameras, maybe additional mobile cameras if we can afford them at areas of, but mobile cameras so we can move them about as and when required. So, uh, okay, so for today, what are we doing on this? Paid, okay. Uh, can we send any comment? Oh, councillor.
And also just, um, just a point that Ley Lane is spelt incorrectly on it. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so for now, we agree the asking amount, the cost. Can we send any feedback or comments from members about our concerns? Uh, for now, but also we take it to the. But can't we send our concerns now and then deal with it in the working group as well? Yeah, uh, councillor.
Uh, a couple of points. One, I totally agree with what other councillors have raised about concerns about effectiveness, although I appreciate if you are a victim of crime, absolutely you want to see CCTVs as, as I do. But if we're going to have an urgent look at this, maybe as the first look, in-depth, quick look, and maybe, you know, we could say we could do it before the next committee, I don't know. Maybe could we not defer it to the next committee and then make a vote on the funding then? Rather than just pay it upfront and it'll be kicking it down, kicking it down the road, won't we, effectively?
Uh, councillor Ray.
Yeah, I, I think so, as I said, they'll, they'll just turn them off. And then it, it, I think the issue of this for us is, and it's probably actually a more general piece, because I think councillor Bittle's right, there's not a universal con- some of these will probably be working absolutely fine, and some of them will have re- reached redundancy. I mean, the classic example is a CID, they have an effectiveness of six months, and they're meant to be moved every six months to remain effective because you get visual blindness of them. Same with things like this. If they're there for such a long time, and I think the ones at Cross Flats Park, have they been there nine, 10 years now? That, that, you, there's a question about actually, if there's still crime going on in those locations, are they actually doing anything to deter crime? So I think this is where the working, the delivery group probably comes in and has that look, but I think this is going to be a question of camera to camera. But more fundamentally, we're effectively subsidizing a core cost that's been asked for by another outside agency, which is the police, because they don't want to pay for it themselves.
Uh, Chair, sorry, can I just come back to you? Uh, councillor Parham first, then Andy Rontry, and then councillor Scopes.
That's precisely why I'm suggesting we may defer the decision of paying the cost, because why would the police switch it off tomorrow? Surely they'll come back with some figures and, yeah, and, and engage with our committee.
Uh, okay, uh, councillor Parham, point well made, um, but if we refuse or defer, that means the service will be eliminated, which we can't afford to do because we invested a lot of money in these cameras. So meanwhile, I think we need to put pressure to see if we can get more out of them, uh, and then take it from there. But Andy Rontry first, and then under Scopes, and then Hannah.
Uh, thanks, Chair. I think the appropriate thing at this stage would be to feedback to Leeds Watch that, um, we're going to get our Community Safety Delivery Group, uh, to look into this in detail, to make sure that we are getting value for it. Uh, just so that they're aware of that and that we're thinking of it, and that they don't feel they've been blindsided by, uh, the delivery group coming at them later in the year.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you. I agree with, um, councillor Rontry there. I think, I think there's a real risk that if we turn these off, it feeds into the narrative that, um, nothing happens and they're pointless and it's a white elephant, all that sort of stuff. So I just think turning them off is like a really short-sighted, um, view. So I'm all for finding other funding avenues, and I'm all for checking on productivity, but I think the reassurance that I'm able to give every time someone says, is the Cross Flats Park CCTV on? I can say yes. Might not always paint the right, right direction, um, but it is on. And that's, that's an important thing to say. If we then go out there and say, no, actually, we turned them off because we didn't, we didn't think it's worth it, I think that's a very difficult conversation to have. And I think if we were to do that, we'd have to have so, be so sure of the data, and that's why I think having anything more than what councillor Rontry has said would be very, um, wouldn't be a great idea. So I, so I think just looking at the data, um, in the first instance, but even if the data is not great, I think there's a real danger to the perception of safety if we, if we start taking this sort of thing away. Thanks, Chair.
Agreed. Councillor Bittle.
Thank you. I guess I've got three points. One of them is relatively similar to the others, that I don't want a random pointless poll. Like, it's there for a reason, we put it in for a reason, and we want it to remain working. Um, I also take councillor Ray's point about it being legacy, but actually, when they were put in, we made the agreement that we would maintain the one thousand. It's like when we put in grit bins. Other councillors across the city have put in grit bins and then don't then, they're not willing to then fund the grit moving forward. And actually, we, if we put something in, it is right and sustainable for us to maintain that, if that's what we've agreed to. Um, and then finally, I think it has also something about messaging to residents, because actually Leeds Watch can, the, the, these particular cameras are particularly useful in the fact that when a crime is ongoing, they can be moved to look at the stuff. And certainly the one that we put in on Cragside, which will be one of the ones that, as, as has been mentioned, is useful, has a light on it. So actually, when a resident makes a call to the police and it goes through to Leeds Watch to train the camera on it, the light comes on, and actually, therefore, the person who is potentially committing crime is also lit up, which is a hell of a deterrent, um, in terms of doing stuff. Uh, so it might be that actually what comes from it is your cameras are old, quote unquote, and don't have those extra bits of tech in them that make a difference. So we end up thinking, actually, to make it more useful, we put more money in, in order to get newer, better cameras, or something like that. So I think it, it needs to remain an open discussion.
Thank you. Uh, very good contributions from all colleagues, and I think because so much money has gone in, they've been doing a good job initially. When, when they were installed, they did do a great job in terms of, uh, you know, uh, finding in further information. They were deterrent as well. A lot of people just were um, deterred from knowing that there's cameras, somebody watching. So we need to agree this funding now. Are we, first of all, we need to agree with this funding, and can we have a vote on that? Yeah, all in favour? But we pass it on to the delivery, Community Safety Delivery Group. I feel from my visit from last time to Leeds Watch that it's the police that are not asking, making enough requests for information, so we need to press on the police to use them effectively. Secondly, the cameras that were installed about 10 years ago or 15 years ago, do they need upgrading? Uh, that's another question which councillor Bittle brought up to our attention, so maybe that needs to be asked as well. Over to Johanna again.
Thank you. I just wondered if, uh, it would be apt at this point for us to potentially look at co-opting somebody from the police in order to, uh, hear the discussions about it, so that it can be, pressure be put on them as a, an organisation.
Yeah, an ex-copper. Okay, councillor Parham.
Just very quickly, building on what councillor Bittle's just said, uh, I think it'd be really good, because it does affect our wards and it's something that's ongoing, that maybe that person who, the committee co-ops could actually speak to us maybe for 10 minutes at the next meeting.
If we could get a right person with experience on this area, it would be good, you know, an ex-policeman or with somebody with experience to really dig into this. Councillor Ray.
I would hope that Leeds Watch or the police would attend a meeting like that anyway, so I don't necessarily think it's the job for a co-optee because you would imagine the people from our own service and West Yorkshire Police would probably want to come to that meeting anyway.
Thank you. You're like a bunter with councillor Bittle. Councillor Bittle again.
Yeah, I guess the reason I brought it up as a co-optee opportunity is because of the niche nature of pushing that particular agenda. Of course, the police and Leeds Watch will be at any meeting, but actually, we don't just want our local team, our neighbourhood team, who will be working with day in, day out. We need the people with that very specific influence within the police to be able to make the case and then change the processes and policies that the police force as a whole has.
Influence and experience. Because, you know, police can give you all, all kinds of stats to the way they want to. They can tailor-make stats, you know, to satisfy you, but the truth, only they know. Okay, um, right, so we agree to approve this application for now, and, uh, any other comments, questions? Thank you.
Okay, so if I can take you to item number eight, and it's the Environmental Action Day for Kirkstall, and we are looking for £1,200 to cover that from Kirkstall Ward.
Any comments? Now, agreed? Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, item number nine. Wonderful, thank you. Item number nine is the LDM Summer Basketball Camp at Cross Flats. They are looking for £1,016 from Beeston and Holbeck and Hunslott and Riverside, and that would be £508 per ward.
Any comments, Paul?
Yes, Chair, but the same caveat with everyone else is that if this is something successful, they need to start looking at reducing the funding requests and to come back in future years.
Send a message that we accepted the application, but if you could look at sustainability in the future. Okay, can we have a vote? All agreed. Thank you.
Lovely. And then item number 10, and I do believe that's the last one. And again, the last, the last one, the basketball one, was from youth activity funding. I'm not sure if I said that. So item number 10, youth music engagement project. Again, this is the amount proposed from youth activity funds. It's for £900. Again, it's from Beeston and Holbeck and Hunslott and Riverside Ward, so it would be £450 per ward.
Any comments? Same caveat? Okay. But in agreement, everybody's in favour. Okay, thank you.
Actually, there is two more items. I do apologize. So we have item number 11, Hunslott Moor. This was ring fenced from the previous year, so it's just being brought to have an official vote on. And we are looking for £15,000 for Hunslott and Riverside area.
No comments? Yes, agreed. Agreed. Yeah, councillor Cunningham.
Thank you. I did have some comments to bring to the meeting from councillor Carlisle, just asking if the decision really wants to be made today, or if it could be deferred to look at whether a community asset needs to be disassembled when the community are not hungry for us to do so.
Councillor Ray?
So we had, have had this conversation again and again. The asset management team can't sell the land. The land itself is half unusable for community gardening projects, because it's basically a giant piece of concrete. We have a significant amount of antisocial behaviour that's happened on that side that we've spent a huge amount of money clearing. The community in general wants us to remove the fence, the police wants us to remove the fence, the parks team wants to remove the fence, the antisocial behaviour team wants to remove the fence. Everybody apart from councillor Carlisle apparently wants us to remove the fence. This is his formal objection, after this could have been approved via delegated decision two months ago, has delayed staff and cost time. So I appreciate his point. There's a wonderful, there's a conversation to be had after the fence is gone about how that land is used, which we're all open to have that conversation about. But everybody but councillor Carlisle wants this dealt with. So I would hope that the committee would take on board the advice of the other local ward members, the police, the antisocial behaviour team, and the Parks Department, and just let us get on with this piece of work that we've been trying to do for months.
Thank you, councillor Ray. Any further comments, councillor Cunningham? Okay, can I move to a vote? Those supporting this application, if you could show your hands, please? Fine, agreed. Majority agreed. Thank you.
Sorry, Chair, I didn't think we were allowed to vote on stuff that, because Syl is being split by ward. So do we still vote for it?
So money-wise, it's been split in towards, it's generated in, but it's still a full committee vote?
Oh, in which case I will amend to voting for. I only didn't because I didn't think it was allowed.
I think, yeah, as a committee, the rule is that it's a committee decision, although the gentlemanly, or you can say, that can't be politically correct now, some of the terms gentlemanly agreement. We have a common understanding that we support each other, the areas where the effect is. So, okay, all in favour? People, we've agreed, majority have agreed to accept this application. Okay, thank you.
So I've checked, and this one really is the last one. So item number 12, and it's new security fire doors. Again, this was ring fenced out of last year's money. We're just bringing it for official approval. The total cost of the project and what they are looking for from committer is £4,480. This is from Syl again, and it's for Hunslott and Riverside Ward.
Okay, any comments? Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you. I think the query from councillor Carlisle was, how much is the space used for public and community events? Or is it primarily a church congregation event?
Thank you. Councillor Ray?
Since he's been to several public events, I would hope he would understand that it is used for community events. It does community cafe moments, it invites the public in to all of its events, such as Christmas council, et cetera. Though it's obviously a religious site, it's open to the wider community. And as I've said, councillor Carlisle has been to many of those, so I would hope he would know.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments, councillor Cunningham? No? Fine, this was the last item, so can we have the vote on this? All in favour of this application? Okay, thank you. That's all. And then the last item, before we all get excited. Date and time of next meeting, so which we all know. Toby, over to Toby now. Your turn.
Right, thank you, Chair. So it's not got a formal report, but it's just on page E of the front sheet. So in consultation with the Chair, the following dates and times are proposed for the remainder of this municipal year. And they've already got the diary hold, but it's just to formally note them. We have had one change as well to one of them. So we've got Tuesday, the 2nd of September 2025, 5.30pm, if anyone's got any comments on that date. And Tuesday, the 4th of November 2025, that did change from the 18th, but if everyone's okay with that date.
So you can make a note of the second meeting in November. The date has been changed to 4th of November.
I think I changed the diary hold on it as well, so it should be all right. That one would be at 5.30pm. And then the final one would be Tuesday, the 3rd of September 2026, at 1.30pm. Okay with everyone? Right, thank you, Chair. Yeah, that was 3rd of February. There should be a diary hold, but I'll formally send them out.
But we've not agreed 20, September 26, yeah, have we? Yeah.
Yeah, we've got, we've got Tuesday, the 2nd of September, and then the last one's 3rd of, 3rd of February, sorry. Yeah, that's, me missing my dates up. Yeah.
2nd of September this year, and then 4th of November, and then February's...
Yeah, Tuesday, the 3rd of February 2026, and that's at 1.30pm.
Councillor Bittle?
Yeah, can I just formally record my apologies for the 4th of November, please?
Okay. So no further comments? That was a very happy, first productive, unifying meeting with a lot of unifying spirit. So I hope this may continue. Long may it continue. Look forward to seeing you next time. Enjoy the summer.